Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here tonight. It is seven o'clock on November the 18th, 2021. Appreciate everyone being in attendance with us tonight. So if you'll bow with me, I'll lead us in our invocation as we get started tonight. Dear Grace and Holy Father, we just thank you for this great, beautiful weather we've had this week and the rain you provided today. Lord, just thank you for our beautiful county and all of our citizens and all of our businesses and entrepreneurs in our community. Lord, we just come tonight to handle the business of this county. We just ask for your wisdom, your grace, and your mercy upon this meeting. Lord, we just pray for those that are unable to be here with us or be with those that are experiencing health issues and be with those families that have experienced lost ones and passing on. Lord, we just praise you for all that you do for us and the way you take care of us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all stand will pledge the American flag and the Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our Georgia state flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation. Thank you, baby seed. This time? Okay, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll of the board.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you. All board members are present here tonight. You do have your agenda in front of you tonight. This time we'll move for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of our agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda's approved as presented. Approval of our minutes and public hearings from our regular scheduled meeting held back on October the 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. So we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th meeting.
Motion to approve. Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The minutes were approved as presented. And our new business, we have a resolution R-52-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Walker County Historic Planning Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas, one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas, a vacancy will exist next year due to expiration of Teresa Dorsey's term. Whereas, Ms. Dorsey desires to continue to serve the community in her present capacity. And whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve as the member of the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission, Teresa Dorsey for a term ending on December 31st, 2024. Therefore, being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Teresa Dorsey is approved, so resolved and adopted the 18th day of November, 2021. For those of you that will recall, our planning, excuse me, our Historic Preservation Commission had been dormant for several years. This board worked together and we collectively appointed members to this commission to re-energize and restart this commission. But we had to stagger the terms to get the cycle going. And so Ms. Dorsey was one of those that started out on just a partial term. And so to keep this in sync, I did reach out to her and also to Commissioner Hart, who had recommended her. And they both give me a thumbs up that they would like to see this move forward. So at this time, I make the motion as the chairman for this resolution to be approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion on this resolution concerning Ms. Dorsey? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ms. Dorsey is reappointed. Thank you all. She's done a great job. Okay, this next one here, I'm not gonna go through and read all of this one. This one's more or less some housekeeping. This just does the advertisement that we had to do and a resolution that we need to do to continue to apply for the transit grade, or transit administration grant that we get every year for our transit system. If I can get that out. So this is just an annual resolution that we do to send back to the George Department of Transportation showing that this board is in sync and wanting to move forward with renewing our transit. Our transit's a very important part of our community. And we transport about 18,000 to 2,000 trips per month, every month. Our citizens are very much reliant on this service. So there's any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution carries for our transit grant. Okay, this time we have a resolution R-54-21, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to set the annual compensation of the Walker County coroner. Whereas, the Georgia General Assembly enacted a local act, Georgia Law, 1965, page 2,710, that established a salary to be paid for the Walker County coroner. And whereas, the local act has been amended from time to time. Whereas, the county is responsible for payment of the coroner's salary. Whereas, the county previously set the coroner's salary by resolution R-46-20 at $28,146.30 or $2,345.53 per month, effective January 1, 2021. Whereas, the coroner has requested the county set the salary of the coroner position at $30,146.40 or $2,512.20 per month, retroactive to November 1, 2021. Therefore, being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the coroner's position shall be set at an annualized salary of $30,146.40 or $2,512.20 per month for services rendered, so resolved and adopted the 18th day of November, 2021. It's my understanding that the last time the coroner's salary was changed was when Duane Wilson, the previous coroner, took office back, I believe that was in the year 2000, somewhere in that timeline. And so when, anytime a coroner changes in the new position, the governing authority is responsible to set that salary. So back in fourth quarter of 2020, as the sole commissioner, I set the salary as what it had been for the prior coroner. But this board at any time has the ability to make a modification of that. And so that's what this action item is tonight. This resolution would call and retro that back to November the 1st. This being an elected position, the coroner's position is paid on a monthly basis. And so this would be included in their payroll, ending the last day of November for the whole month of work of November. Any questions or discussions on this?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is approved. Okay, we have a proclamation here tonight I wanna read. And then we'll ask our superintendent, Damon Rains, to come up for a presentation with the board and a picture. A proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Hunger Free Month in 2021. Whereas, hunger remains a persistent problem that impacts our community. And whereas, nearly 70% of our children in Walker County live in a food insecure environment and face the risk of hunger each day. Whereas, hunger affects children's ability to grow and learn, studies have revealed that connections between hunger and depression, anxiety, behavior, and other obstru-
Obstructions.
Obstructions, thank you, to the children's school performance. And whereas, 660 students from nine Walker County and two Chickamauga City Schools currently receive a brown backpack with seven nutritious, non-perishable food items each Friday to reduce weekend hunger. And whereas, Northwest, North Georgia Community YMCA serves nearly 36,000 meals locally each year through Backpack Blessings and a summer food program and must raise roughly $30,000 a year to support their efforts to address hunger. And whereas, the third Sunday in November has been established as a giving day among churches to support Backpack Blessings and many charities. Individuals and organizations will be inspired to impact their community on Giving Tuesday on November the 30th. Therefore, I, Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November to be observed as Hunger Free Month in Walker County. Encourage all citizens, churches, and other nonprofit organizations to make our community stronger by combating hunger. Sign and seal the 18th day of November, 2021. We do have Damon Rains with us. So Damon, if you'll come forward, we've got a copy here signed for you. And we wanna thank you for what you and the school system and all your teachers and all do to combat this. I know this is going over and above the call of duty of teaching kids to try to make sure they don't have these insecurities of food. I know y'all have been doing this several years. And I appreciate you coming every year and bringing recognition to this. And we'd like for you to say a few words about what you and your team do.
Sure, sure. Thank you so much for doing this. I'm responsible this year with YMCA to raise the $30,000. And so we partner with our churches, partner with a lot of communities, community partners as well. And we end up raising that money every year because that is a very heartfelt need with our students. And so we just appreciate the ability to come out and talk about it. Backpack Blessings has been going out seven years. And it's grown from three schools to 11 schools. We've grown from about 200 kids to a little over 700 kids. We have completely volunteer run. They come in and do that for us every other Tuesday. And then we partner with primary healthcare. And they give us a larger bag during Thanksgiving and Christmas because they're off for a full week or those two weeks. So we give them a little more food. And it obviously doesn't last a long time. But if you listen to our children, they'll tell you when I'm off school for Thanksgiving and Christmas, even though our teachers love that time period, they don't get two hot meals a day. And so we try to make sure that they have something that keeps them and sustains them over that weekend or over that week off that they're away from us. So it is something that we take on and take a lot of pride in doing. And it's a very viable program, but it's also very, very needed and very important. So I just appreciate you guys supporting that. And if you're in a church that wants to give a love offering, we'll take those. We try to separate churches state, but we'll take their money. And the churches here have been great to support us. And so we definitely appreciate you guys. I also brought each one of you guys some information just about the school system, but also a little more information about this and the impact we've had over the past three years. So I'll leave those with you, and if you don't mind getting through that.
Sure. Thank you again. I know this is a big project that y'all do. And it takes a lot of coordination, a lot of volunteers. But let everybody know, we really appreciate what they're doing for our kids in the community.
Sure will. Yeah. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next couple of items that we have here is a memorandum of understanding between Walker County and our cities, being Chickamauga LaFayette and Rossville, concerning EPA brownfield grants. And also a master service agreement with TerraCon for a brownfield property identification, inventory assessment, and planning. So at this time, we have a couple representatives from TerraCon that are here with us. I'm gonna ask you to come up and give you an opportunity to share with us this exciting project and what you're hoping to accomplish. And hopefully, we'll be successful as a team. So if you'd like to come up to the podium where we can get you on our camera and pick you up by the microphone. Y'all, introduce yourselves, please.
Yes, I'm Dallas Whitmill with TerraCon. And we're an environmental and engineering consulting firm. We, one of the things that we specialize in is what we call brownfield sites that are impacted or might be impacted. And people are not willing to invest money into those to develop them because of those types of concerns. And we do a lot of work on cleaning those up and helping communities improve those sites as kind of a seed to help grow and improve other properties around there as well. And I'm based out of Chattanooga. Amanda lives in North Georgia, but also works out of the Chattanooga office as an employee there primarily from her home. And she's gonna kind of give you some more details on the grant application that we're assisting you guys with and what the potential benefits that would have for y'all. Excuse me, sorry.
Thank you. And I'm Amanda Hirit. I'm also with TerraCon. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this off. I can speak as loud as Dallas. So I'm an environmental scientist. And I work with communities all over the southeast to work on brownfield projects. So one of the things we do is we help communities go after these brownfield grants. And what these grants do is they work with brownfield properties. But the purpose of them is to work on redevelopment and community revitalization. So that's really the purpose, and also education within the community. So there's components of assessing the properties. So that would be looking at the historical use of the properties and potentially what kind of contamination would have been there. There's also the side where we're actually educating the public. So we would have training sessions with the public. And we also typically do a, like, developer, county, county members and professionals training on, you know, how you work through the brownfield process and getting the site redeveloped. So that's part of the grant as well. Another portion is sites that have been deemed as having contamination, working on planning for getting that site back into reuse. So that's part of the grant as well. So this is something that we really enjoy doing because we get to be part of the communities and working one-on-one with community members. The kind of sites that we would be looking at if the grant was awarded would be sites that could either be owned by government or it could be owned by a private individual. So that's something that's really great about this program is you can work with somebody that wants to get their site ready for redevelopment and working through that process. So it's a really exciting way to see real change for the community at the grassroots level. So it's an exciting program.
So I know a few of the sites that some of our folks would be very familiar with that I believe is part of the scope of work is gonna be our Coats America building up in the Rossville community. Also, I guess, the Pureless Mill, Il Pureless Mill. And then back down this way, probably Burco, not Burco, Barwick. The Barwick facility, I think, here in LaFayette. I know there's quite a list that y'all were looking at. But that's just to name a few of the type properties. And again, like you say, they can be public or private, either one. And so that, right there along is a mixture of both those.
Sure. And it could be a bigger, a big one or a small one too, so.
So the annual, or not the annual, but the grant that you're going after, isn't it 600,000?
This, this year it's 500,000.
500,000, okay.
It changes a little bit every year. So this year it's 500,000. But like I said, it's for, primarily for assessment activities. So if you had someone that was looking to redevelop their site, we could do what's called the Phase One, which is looking at the history of the site. And then we could do the Phase Two, which is collecting samples. And they could use that to either market their property or if somebody was looking to buy the property, they could use that as, or endorse that. And it just kind of gets you into the whole cycle of redeveloping that property.
So last year, we worked with TerraCon, and they did a phenomenal job. And we were really under the crunch of the timeline. And they pulled a lot of information together, submitted an application. And y'all got super close for us. I think you got us within four points of being awarded. And I don't believe there was anyone else in Georgia that even got an award last year, is my understanding. And so to get that close, and then I know y'all got feedback from the grant reviewers and all of how we can improve that. So we feel like we've got a really good shot this year where our partners at TerraCon and all of our cities listed are on board to do this again. And y'all work on a contingency pending getting the grant, correct?
Yes.
Right. So there's not any matching funds or any upfront funding or anything that's coming from any of our local governments, correct?
Yeah, even after you get the grant, there's not any matching funds for this particular grant, which is very beneficial for the communities.
So this will help us develop that master plan of how we go forward and redevelop these sites. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do have a question. So you said it's a half a million dollar grant for this year, being 2022?
Yes. So it actually would not even be awarded until May, June of '22. And then the cycle starts in October. So the year goes October to Oc-
So if awarded, we'll have half a million dollars in October of 2022 to work with for a year.
And it's a three-year program.
It's 500,000 total for three years.
But it doesn't, you could spend it all in the first year. It just depends on how many sites you have and how it's going.
You need to spend it within that three-year period. And the other thing to note with the brownfield program is when we go into a community, we like to set it up as a program, not a grant. So when you use this grant, you will show success with the grant. You will have sites assessed. People will be interested in those. They'll buy those, redevelop those, which then gives you opportunity to go back and leverage EPA for additional grants. If you do an assessment on a site and that site's contaminated, you can go back to EPA and say, okay, we've assessed it. Now we need money to clean it up. And you can pursue that. And they've got cleanup grants, assessment grants, training grants, all kinds of different types of grants that you can pursue. So it's, it's, it's a program. If it's done right, it's a program that evolves. And you continue through it and continue gaining grants, not just the one.
Good. Very good. Tell me again when the grant is gonna be awarded?
Typically, it's around June.
June, okay.
May or June. It's just, it's, you know, it's working with the federal government, governments. But that's typically the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Question. So your company comes in, does the initial assessment to identify EPA or problematic areas, correct? Do you also do the cleanup or just the assessment?
We work with contractors to do the cleanups. So for the, like, cleanup grants, it would be the same, a typical process would be we would write the grant application. It would go through. And we would be the environmental consultant. So we're basically managing that. And you would subcontract out through that grant to have somebody actually do, like, asbestos abatement would be one thing that we've worked on other grants with, or petroleum cleanup.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank y'all both for coming. Very informative, good information.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Okay, so the next action item here is, one of the documents that they need to go with the grant is to show a memorandum of agreement between our local governments, being Walker County, City of LaFayette, City of Rossville, and City of Chickamauga. And so do we have a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement with our local cities?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This is approved. Okay, and then you have there before you, our next action item is the master service agreement with TerraCon for the brownfield agreement. Our county attorney has gone through this. And there were a few things that he recommended be modified. And he worked with representatives from TerraCon. And they got those all worked out, no problem. It's very easy to work with. And so everything here should be in good order. And this would get us moving forward to apply for this grant. I think you've actually gotta have this turned in tomorrow, I believe, right?
That's the plan.
So we're under a tight timeline here, but we can get it done. So any further discussion on the TerraCon?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve the TerraCon agreement?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agreement with TerraCon is approved. All right, very good. Next item we have is a quick claim deed between Walker County, Georgia, and Ten Foot Properties LLC. Our county attorney has worked on this. I'm gonna ask him to give us an overview of this quick claim.
Sure. What we have here is any time that there is a need for a storm water management agreement, the owner of the property has to sign it with the county saying they will abide by the regulations. This particular piece of property deals with a five-parcel development that is owned by Ten Foot Properties. And one of those parcels is where one of our firehouses is located. And the detention pond for which this agreement is based is actually on that same parcel with our fire station. So it will become our responsibility, it will become the county's responsibility to, now that we have established the fire station up there, to assume the responsibility for the stormwater management. So that's, that's a quick claim deed in this case. Really, it's done as a quick claim deed. You usually think of that as a conveyance of property. But what has happened is a stormwater management agreement is recorded on the deed records. So all that we're doing here is releasing Ten Foot Properties from their response, from their future responsibility maintaining the stormwater detention area because it's on our property.
Okay. Do you want to have any questions for David on that?
One question. You said up there, when you referenced the location, where is this?
It's in the Hinkle community.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure of that.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the presented quick claim deed as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It's approved. Next item on our agenda is our monthly statistical data for October. We did intake 115 dogs and 44 cats for the month. Our code compliance, we had 1,285 inspections, 19 violations. And they were able to close out eight cases. So they've got 146 properties in compliance for the year. With our code enforcement, registered voters from our registration voter's office, 24 additional people signed up to vote. Fire department responded to 224 calls for service. It was handled by 422 units. Had a great month on smoke alarms. 44 smoke alarms installed by our first responders. So keep those calls coming in. For those of you that would like to have smoke alarms installed at no cost, the fire department will send a couple representatives out to do that for you. Roadside trash pickup, 13,320 pounds of trash picked up in October. Mountain Cove Farms had a big month in October with a season change, 122 nights stayed at Mountain Cove Farms. Still doing new home construction in Walker County. Nine permits pulled in October. Gets us 123 for the year. Media impression stories, 39. Additional 91 Facebook followers, 39 Facebook posts, and 45,567 visits to our website. And we added 44 new members to our e-newsletter subscription. Still patching potholes and still paving roads, but we patched 491 potholes. Talking about our transit earlier, we had 1,849 transit trips through our transit service. That's up from 1,693 for the prior months. So we continue to expand and reach many people through our transit service. This time, the next item on our agenda is for any public comments. We ask anyone that would like to speak during this time of our public comments that you come to the podium. We do ask, if you would, please, to keep your topics related to items in Walker County that we can have a positive effect on. But you are welcome to speak on any topic that you care for. But we do have to limit you to a five-minute time. but we do have to limit you to a five-minute timeline. So does anyone like to come up? Looks like we've got one. And if you would also, when you come up, state your, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jennifer Smiles, and my family and I live in Chickamauga, and my husband works for the Walker County government. I recently wrote an email to Commissioner Blake Moore and Commissioner Whitfield about a very important topic, and I've been waiting to see how this issue is going to play out before talking to the whole board. I wanted to bring this issue to you in the frame of a story that I recently heard. I had the privilege of hearing a well-known Jewish man speak, and he shared that his family survived the Holocaust, but he still bears the trauma from that horrific tragedy, as all Jews do. He said that when most Jewish people meet a non-Jew, they think, if there were another Nazi regime, would he hide me? At the time of the first Holocaust, the people who would not hide these precious innocent lives are those who are following irrational dictates and who feared the rules of the state or the opinion of others more than they feared God, and therefore doing the right thing. I want to ask you today to be a group who will rescue the people around you. I want to ask you to make Walker County a safe haven for Americans who live in freedom. There is a lot of talk about freedom lately, and you may think that this is an issue that is not in your jurisdiction to regulate. But I want to ask you to think about innocent lives knocking at your door, asking you to let them have a livelihood with their conscience still intact and to have the choice of what they put in their bodies. Yes, I am here to ask you to make a resolution to ban public and private businesses from imposing COVID vaccine mandates and discriminatory testing on their employees. When OSHA released their new mandate, it was to be a rule that was placed above any state laws or regulations. As you have seen, many states, including ours, are fighting back in courts and will, God willing, soon be able to end this mandate. The most recent ruling by the court is that OSHA is, and I quote, "to take no steps to implement or enforce the mandate until further court ordered." In the meantime, however, many employers have felt the push from the Biden administration, and in an effort to try to comply with this rule, may have already or be planning to impose this unconstitutional, unscientific mandate on their staff. Many Walker County residents will be left with a choice of following their conscience and being free to choose their, or being able to put food on their tables and do the work they need to do. The employers of Walker County need to understand that a person's choice to get vaccinated is a personal risk benefits analysis, like all medical decisions should be. The risks of the current COVID-19 vaccines are tremendous, as are shown in the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System. The current reports, which reflect only 1% of all events, show 18,461 deaths, 91,000 hospitalizations, and hundreds of thousands of other severe reactions to COVID vaccines. This system is meant to be a red flag system to alert problems with any vaccine being given. This should be a huge red flag and shows the high risk of COVID vaccines because for the past 30 years, there has been on average 200 deaths annually from all vaccines combined. The benefits of the COVID vaccine are waning tremendously and do not warrant a universal tyrannical mandate that does not allow for personal choice or other scientific realities, such as low viral risk, natural immunity, or medical or religious exemption. So I ask you, what can you do to protect your fellow citizens? You told me in your email that you are very limited to set policy for COVID-related issues, but you have taken action in the following ways in regards to COVID issues. You made a resolution to stop back taxes from accruing interest. You made a resolution to waive the penalty and interest on business occupational tax. You shut down restaurants to be able to have dine-in service. So reading through the vast number and breadth of some of the resolutions you and the full board of commissioners have made makes me think that if you felt it was important, or rather, if the people of Walker County whom you represent felt it was important, you could create something that would provide a way for the people of Walker County to work without fear. The question I ask you then is, how are you going to help these people knocking at your door, asking for shelter from a mandate that, as the court stated this week, is staggeringly overboard and raises serious constitutional concerns and likely exceeds the federal government's authority? I ask you again that you create a resolution or an order or a joint decision with the Health Department or Labor Office, whatever will let business owners know that Walker County is a safe place for people who want to work hard and still make decisions for their own bodies. And that if any business owner tries to create a totalitarian form of employment, that we are watching, and you are watching, and something will be done about it. Suggestions for penalties to include in the resolutions could include fines. OSHA proposes fining businesses who don't comply with their unlawful rule to pay between $13,600 and $136,000 per violation per day. You could also revoke business licenses. OSHA, in all of their regulatory graciousness, allows states and local municipalities to regulate ordinances for how businesses. So I close by asking, what will you do for the working citizens of Walker County in the face of unconstitutional, unscientific tyranny? Thank you. And here's some information if y'all would like to look at it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, hearing none. No one coming forward. We'll move to the next item on our agenda. And we'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore for commissioner comments.
As always, appreciate everybody coming out, finding help in any way. Feel free to call, text, email. Remember Rossville and Carthel Rogers' family in your prayers as Rossville had a great loss this week.
Thank you.
As Commissioner Blake Moore stated, we want to keep the Carthel family, the Rossville family in our prayers because we did lose an individual who's spent countless hours and years working with our youth and the citizens of the county. So we do, we will be greatly missing him. I'd also like to mention that as we move into the holiday season, and that's where we're headed pretty rapidly, let's do consider and look out for one another. And as the lady just stated here about some concerns in the country, you know, hunger is a major concern as we've done this month. So let's just work to help our neighbors and reach out and think about each other during the holiday season and think about what the real reason for the holiday season is. And that's what I'd ask you to do. Thank you for attending.
Yes, I would like to recognize Colin Bowers and four of his employees that helped us out this week over in the Villanow community. Steve Barnes, Scott Gray, Scott Mason, and Billy Dyke. They came out to the Villanow Community Center, put up a swing set that's been in stores for about four years over there, and took time out of their day. They had plenty of stuff to do, I know. But they, I haven't called them for about six months. I'm not kidding. They had a lot going on. But he said, when we get through more, then we'll get it up. And when they got through more, they came out and they got that up. So Colin, thank you, and those four guys that came out working, I appreciate it. It looks great like that today. So that'll be used there. December the 3rd, on Friday, is the Lefet Christmas Parade at 6 o'clock, coming right down North Main Street. It's got something to do with Lefet. And on December the 4th, the following day, is the 10th Annual Reindeer Run. A 1K and a 5K in town. So me and Commissioner Askew are going to be running in that. He don't know it yet. But that's hosted by the Lefet Women's Club at Joe Stop Park. Get ready, more asking.
Thank you, sir. You're the official starter, right?
Yeah, exactly right.
So just wanted to mention the Carthel Rogers family and our thoughts and prayers with the family. And then Rossville suffered a great loss with his passing. I would also like to thank the following agencies that responded to an accident that my brother was involved in last Wednesday. Walker County Sheriff's Office, the City of Lefet Police, Fire and Rescue, Georgia State Patrol. Also, one of the county employees, David Brown, who is our safety committee chairman, and also John Logan. I appreciate their compassion. I appreciate their quick response and their professionalism. We have wonderful first responders in our county, and I just want to thank each and every one of them for what they did. Also, I want to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving, and thanks for everyone coming tonight.
Thank you. I'd also like to extend my condolences and prayers to Carthel Rogers' family and the extended family in Rossville. As these gentlemen have mentioned, Carthel will be a great loss to our community. Over the last five years, he's been a gem as an individual, has been great to work with. He's just always a smile on his face, always wanting to do something to make it better for the kids, always put the kids first and put in just countless thousands of hours of community service to oversee the recreational programs up in Rossville. So keep their families in your prayer through these holiday season. And I'd like to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy time with your family. And remember, these days are precious with all of our family members, and give everybody an extra hug. So that's all I've got at this moment. But we do have a need for an executive session to discuss real estate and personnel. So I'd like to make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel.
Commissioner, if you would, also amend that for litigation.
Okay, yes. So we'll also add litigation to my motion. So we're going in to executive session for litigation, personnel, and real estate. So we have a second to that.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn, and we will come back out after executive session. Appreciate those of y'all being here tonight. Okay, it is 9:29 on November the 18th. We just come out of executive session, so we'll call this back to order. We have no action to be taken from our executive session at this time. So we will move for a motion to close out our meeting for tonight.
Motion to adjourn meeting.
Now, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.